Call to order, the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting, May 14th, 2012, 6:00 P.M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Alex Ward.
Stand for the pledge. Thank you, sir. Counsel, I've had a request to make an addition to the agenda, to add a presentation. So it would be under Special Order of Business Presentations from the Sioux Graves Emergency Coordinator, Lincoln County School District. Is there any objection to adding another presentation in that category?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. We'll add it to 10.8. With that, then, this is the comments. We've got comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. The purpose of comments from citizens is to allow citizens to present information or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda or regarding agenda items that do not include a public hearing. A time limit of five minutes per citizen shall apply. I've asked the city recorder to utilize the light system so that the speaker will be informed as to their remaining time and so that we have consistency. As a general rule, this is not a time for an exchange of questions, however, at the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor can discuss or raise questions regarding something presented by a citizen. We have sign up, John Gibson. You're actually a presentation, so that would be, we'll hold you back. And Brian Green. It's this. Make sure you're not on presentation or anything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Green. I'm a local resident, also a member of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board of Directors. And as you know, I have sponsored the formation of an LID for sewer-ing 59 existing homes and home sites in an area just north of Regatta Park between West Devils Lake Road and the lake. And you unanimously approved an expenditure of approximately $20,000 for an independent engineering study and report. And that report is dated April of 2012 and was delivered to the city in April, and I received a copy on April 25th. The report is very favorable in terms of the feasibility of engineering, construction, and financing of the sewer-ing of the area, as well as some road and drainage improvements included for the benefit of the lake. In terms of the LID process, the next step is for you to hold a public hearing and to consider approval of the report and of the LID itself. I'm here to complain, I guess, for lack of a better word, about the apparent failure of the 2012-2013 budget proposed by the budget officer to include, at least by my reading, any funding for the LID in the event that it is approved by you. I realize it would have been best for me to have brought this up at any and all of your budget committee meetings on April 30th, or May 7th, or May 8th, but as bad luck would have it, I was unavoidably out of town between April 30th and May 7th, and I found out about your May 8th meeting on May 9th. So anyway, I understand the adoption of the budget will not occur until June, and there's still time to consider this matter and include funding so that if you do approve the LID, that there'll be funds to pay for it. There is the following kind of vague reference in the budget message that provides some hope to me. It's on page 25 of the budget message, talks about unbonded assessment fund. It says this fund has a variety of functions. It provides loans to other funds and is a clearinghouse for transactions that don't fit elsewhere. It can be used to fund the local improvement districts, but the downside is the inability to loan funds for city projects. I don't know what that means. I don't know if the city project or an LA, you know, I don't know what category that comes under, but even if this fund could be used to fund the LID, it doesn't appear that there's enough money in the fund. Some of it seems, it looks to me like it's dedicated to other uses. So I come to the conclusion that there's nothing provided in the budget for funding the LID if you approve it. The necessity for sewer-ing the lake and reducing the nutrient loading from septic systems into the lake has been, I think, recognized and discussed constantly for the 34 years that I've been here. And in my opinion, until this project came along as a model that could be used to sewer the lake gradually and affordably in stages, the distance between the dream of sewer-ing the lake and the reality of sewer-ing the lake has only increased in those 34 years. I don't know if you have a copy of the engineer's report, but I can send it to you. I intend to send you additional information ASAP, and I can include that. The budget message says, and it highlights that, quote, "Citywide, we expect to end with about $6,800,000 in fund balances, reserves, and contingencies." And I know that there are varying degrees of wiggle room, but the amount needed to initiate sewer-ing of the lake is only 3% of this amount of fund balances, reserves, and contingencies. And, you know, not only will the money be repaid in full by the property owners, but, and with interest where the payments are deferred, the payments, but the city is going to receive new SDCs and monthly sewer payments that will otherwise never be available. And even ignoring for a second all of the non, I'll be done in just a second, all the non-financial benefits of sewer-ing the lake, it seems short-sighted to fail to fund this project solely because the funding recovery is not as fast in the short term as some on the city staff might like. But putting aside the fact that this project fills a priority need for the entire community, and considering only the financial aspect, I think we could agree that funding is available for this project and it should make funding available.
Can you finish up?
It should be approved by you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Missed you at the three meetings. We missed you at the budget meetings.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Chuck Jacobson.
Thank you. As a member of the Rhodes End community, I have a letter here from our attorney, Mr. Jack Orchard of Ball Janic.
Would you mind giving us your name and address?
My apologies. Chuck Jacobson. I reside at 6537 Logan Road in the Rhodes End community. The letter I have before me is from Jack Orchard of the Ball Janic firm, the attorney representing the Rhodes End community. I'd like to read that to you. Dear Mayor Anderson and council members, over the past several weeks, you have received some 100 revocations of the previously provided consents to the city annexation of Rhodes End properties. Attached to this letter will be a roster of those property, Rhodes End property owners who have revoked their consent to annexation. On their behalf, these property owners have asked that I formally reiterate to you their revocations so that there is no question about their present intentions, nor about their legal position. They do not agree or desire to have their properties annexed to Lincoln City. Instead, they believe that the City of Lincoln City should cooperatively work with the Rhodes End Water District to resolve any outstanding issues concerning the appropriate manner for water service to the Rhodes End area. Please afford these property owners the same level of respect which each of you would expect in dealing with a local government agency. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Jack Orchard, Ball Janic, Inc. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask a question of Mr. Jacobson?
Sure.
This letter apparently requests a formal recognition of revocations of previously provided consents. Is that correct? So does this mean that those customers no longer wish to have water service? Is that, should that be the city's understanding?
The customers still wish to have water service under the ongoing contract with the City of Lincoln City, and they wish to be afforded the same consideration and discussion with the City of Lincoln City, with the Water District of the Rhodes End community.
Okay, so you reference a contract, so they still want water service under what contract?
Under the ongoing contract that you're still operating under.
Can you be more specific?
I believe there is a contract, a long-term contract. It seems to still be in use because you're still providing water to the citizens of the Rhodes End community. Speak to the fine legal details of that because I'm not an attorney at law. Mr. Orchard would be glad to converse with you on that issue.
So I'm just trying to understand the letter. So the position is the city should provide water service under an ongoing contract with, you think, the Water District?
That's correct.
And that any consents to annexation are apparently revoked or formally, we have formal notice in this letter from Mr. Orchard?
I believe you should read the letter and then contact with Mr. Orchard.
I will do that. I'm just trying to clarify. Thank you.
Thanks for making the delivery. And Bruce?
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and council members. My name is Bruce Koikee. I'm serving as the interim president of Oregon Coast Community College, and I reside in Newport, 322 Southeast Tarnia, Newport. My purpose this evening is to introduce myself to you, as well as bring you up to date on some of the activities that are ongoing at the college. One of those things is our community education program, and this is a program that really took about an eight-year hiatus when the state decided not to fund these type of classes, kind of enrichment and skill development. And it poses an opportunity for us at this time to put that out. We did a publication that came out probably about two months ago, and we've had some response, and just want to reassure you that we'll be having a second round and fine-tuning kind of the offerings and all. So, community education, that's really something that we'd like the community members also to participate in, sign up for those classes and enjoy. The other thing that we have going at the college is really through some grant opportunities, grant-funded opportunities. And these have to do with allied health, and so we have several programs that are going to start this coming fall. Medical Assistant Program, Home Health Aid, Basic Nursing, and Acute Care Nursing Assistance. So some of these are relatively short in duration of study, so it's not like the nursing program where you really commit two years to studying. So I'll leave you some literature there. We'll be using the facility in Walport to house a lot of those programs, and as well as continue offering classes for the North Center here, try to really create a much stronger bond with Taft High School and getting high school students to get and earn college credits for their. And we'll still continue to offer our nursing program, as well as aquarium science. So that's the second item that I wanted to present to you. And then we'll close out with really an invitation to council members and to members in the community to come out on July 21st, that's a Saturday. The college celebrates its 25th birthday this year, so we have a celebration in Newport on May 19th, but we'll follow that up with a July 21st celebration at the campus here. So please do join us for that, and that event starts at 10 o'clock and goes till 2:00. We'll be having a publication or publicity blitz in the next month or so for that. So put those on your calendar. I'll also leave you some literature about what I mentioned, programs and activities through the college. Available for any questions, I still see I have a green light, so.
Good shape. Thank you very much, Bruce. Thanks for coming tonight. Any other comments from citizens present that didn't get the opportunity to sign up? Now would be the time. Okay. Then moving ahead, we'll take, go to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any counselor may request that an item be removed for a separate discussion and action. The consent agenda consists of, one, minutes of meeting, April 23rd, 2012; two, amendment to settle agreement, amendment to settlement agreement, James Drayton; number three, Oregon Emergency Management Agreement; number four, Oregon Department of Transportation, intergovernmental agreement amendment, one, bicycle pedestrian plan; number five, Oregon Liquor Control Commission, annual renewals; and number six, Resolution Number 2012-08, a resolution declaring Exhibit A surplus property, providing for exemption from Lincoln City Municipal Code Chapter 2.05 Public Contracts, competitive bid procedures, and approving disposal by auction. Any requests to remove any items? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. Special Order of Business and Presentations. We have a presentation this evening, National Safe Boating Week. John Gibson.
Thank you. I've got some props here.
All right. Is this one?
I'll sit down. Okay, I'll need one in a couple of minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, city councilors, for letting me have a few minutes to share something that's important to us at the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. My name is John Gibson. I'm the Public Affairs Officer, and with me in the back is my wife, Gail Gibson, who's a public education officer, and our flotilla commander, Larry Cox. We are a force multiplier that supports the United States Coast Guard. As a matter of fact, the Coast Guard is the only military service that has an auxiliary that can do pretty much anything the Coast Guard personnel can do, other than law enforcement and some police actions. But what we're here to get the word out for is an annual event that has been going on for 60 years called National Safe Boating Week. It begins on May 20, May 19th, and runs through the 25th. The purpose of National Safe Boating Week is to encourage safe boating practices, and because, you know, we do have a lot of injuries and deaths out there on the water, and people live here and come to Lincoln City to have a good time, and to some, boating is a big part of coming here and living here. We're blessed with the Pacific Ocean on one side, Devils Lake on the other, the Sealets Bay on the south, and the mouth of the Salmon River to the north. We're also blessed with great emergency responders from the city to the fire district to the Coast Guard Station in Depot Bay. We want boating to be a fun experience, and in order for that, we want to encourage safe boating. For example, last year, approximately 700 people died in boating accidents, and within the state of Oregon, there were nine fatalities. The interesting thing about in the state is that six of, five of them were non-powered craft, you know, kayaks, could be paddle boards, could be canoes, could be rafts on one of the rivers. And so it's not just, not just people that are in powerboats, that are out in jet skis that are getting in trouble. And of course, a couple of things we can do to prevent that, and of course, one is to know your boat, know your craft. I mean, if you're, I mean, do any of you kayak, for example? Hey, if you did, do you know how to roll in a kayak? Are you, do, and if you're in a boat, do you know where your, where the life preservers are and flotation devices, fire extinguishers, things like that? So that is, that is what we're trying to, trying to get the, get the word out for. So we're doing several things. First of all, the station Depot Bay, which houses a couple of dozen personnel of the United States Coast Guard, is having an open house this weekend, Saturday, the 19th, and Sunday, the 20th, from 9 until 3:00. So if you ever want to take a look inside the station, or go inside the boathouse, or climb aboard one of the 47-foot rescue boats, here's your chance, and we certainly invite you all to come on down. It's between 9 and 3:00 on Saturday and Sunday. Another thing we're doing is for National Safe Boating Week is we're going to be hitting all the boat ramps in the area, including those here in Devils Lake, with vessel inspectors. And these are auxiliary, Coast Guard Auxiliary members that are, that have been trained to inspect your boats and trailers, and this doesn't cost anything, and we can, and we can make recommendations for safety equipment that may not be aboard, or other things. But that little decal is really, really a nice thing to have on your boat. And if you, and there will be a press release in the papers with the phone number, I should have brought it with me, but anyway, you can, you can certainly call me at 764-2678 if you have any questions on vessel exams. The third thing, we're doing a boater education class, and that's actually the number-one thing people can do, is to operate a powerboat. You need to have, not a AAA card, that's the wrong craft, but you need to have one of these things, a boater, a boater education card. Do you all have one of these if you run a boat? Okay, yeah. And we have our next class scheduled for the 16th of June at the Community Center in Depot Bay, and again, you can call me for more information on that. So what I'd like to do is do a little drill, and this is just to show you how simple the number-one thing to do to prevent boating accidents is, and that is to wear your life jacket. And just wear it. Matter of fact, of these nine victims that passed away in the state of Oregon last year, only three were wearing their life jackets, and the emergency responders feel that the other six would have had a pretty darn good chance of survival if they were just wearing it. And I need four volunteers because I want to demonstrate how important it is to wear it. So you can, don't have to leave.
What a young man got through, raised.
All right, come on up. Come on up. Is your life scout, too? Okay, we need him on. Hey. Uh-oh, we got fire in the, in the sink. We have 30 seconds to get out. Start now. See who can put on their life jacket here. Now, the reason it's all in the pile is because, you know, a lot of people in the boat, they'll stick it, throw all the life jackets under a compartment, and will not know where they are. Someone ate before the meeting, I see. Oh, no, this is a tough one. Oh, no. Look at this. Okay, we're at 30 seconds. How did we do? Well, you know, you might make it. You might make it. I don't know, poor gent, you know? I think, I hope you're a good swimmer. And, you know, you're there.
Water weight.
So the motto is, wear it.
Wear it.
Thank you very much and for letting us come, and definitely, please come down to the open house this weekend. And if you need to get one of those, he's good to go.
All right. Thank you, John. That was a good demonstration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one question.
Yes.
Are you still able to get your boating license online?
Yes, you are. There's generally a fee for that, and, but because it's a private party vendor, but I tell you what, come on down to one of our classes. We have a lot of fun with stuff like this.
I got mine online. Didn't cost me a nickel.
Well, that's changed.
That was a long time ago, I guess.
All right. Well, thanks for getting your card.
Say, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. John, you got a question or?
How can people get ahold of you? Do you want to leave a phone number or something?
Yeah, so you can call me, John Gibson, at 541-764-2678. My wife, Gail, is the, is the public education person, so she's in charge of the, of our Boat Oregon classes. We also put them online. If you Google the Oregon State Marine Board Boater Education Classes, that they have a listing of all the classes in the state. And so we're easy to get ahold of. You did work on our house many years ago.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, volunteers, for coming forward and helped demonstrate the need to wear life jackets. Thank you. All right.
Yes, we'll be pulling all that equipment out for everyone to take a look at. For the audience, I'm Lila Bradley, the Public Works Director for the City of Lincoln City. And every year, the governor does a proclamation for the National Public Works Week, which is May 20th to the 26th this year. And I, if it's okay, I have a proclamation to read, not quite as exciting as a boating safety, but. So whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, and public buildings, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And this was signed by John Kitshopper, our governor, and so it's a hereby proclamation, May 20th to 26th, National Public Works Week. And we normally do quite a few educational programs, we'll be putting up projects in front of our public works area, and educating on, on the sewer, as far as fat soil and grease, which get into our system. And we also will be doing the Touch a Truck, which is a bit after this Public Works Week, but we bring out all of our equipment and give citizens a chance to take a look at that, and all of the kids, and do quite a few different educational pieces at the community center as well. Sound great? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we'll bring up one more chair.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Gail Kimberling, and I work at the community center, of course, but I'm also a member of the Ford Institute Leadership Program, North Lincoln County Cohort. And with me, Kathy Steer.
Cindy Fosbit. We began meeting in the fall. We are one of five communities chosen in the state of Oregon and southern Washington for a community building program that's funded by the Ford Family Foundation, which is based in Roseburg. The other communities are Canby, Forest Grove, Western Yumattila County, and Walla Walla. And we're real privileged to have this in Lincoln City, because this is a way to grow present and future leaders for our community. These are the members of our cohort, about 25, 30, and they come from all walks of life, from high school students to senior citizens, educators, business people, city staff, and educators, and everyone in between. As part of our cohort, we are tasked with coming up with a class project. It's an opportunity for class members to practice the leadership skills that they learn during our tenure with the Ford Institute Leadership Program, and it's a way to make our community a better place for everyone. We had to meet several criteria when developing ideas for a class project. It had to be small enough to complete in a year's time. All the class members have to be involved, it has to be visible, tangible, and something with an outcome that can be enjoyed by everyone. So we went through quite a process to come up with our project. We developed about 40 ideas, and you can see, they were, of course, put on whiteboards, on stencils, a lot of discussion took place. We took dots, put them near our favorites, we had more discussion, we threw out those that were maybe already being considered by other groups, that were not feasible due to constraints with public agencies or legal issues. And then we stood around tables and actually put pen to paper and talked about the pluses and minuses of each project under consideration, and we narrowed the 40 down to four. And then it was more thinking, discussion, dots, discussion. And the last thing we did, they call fist-to-five, can you agree with the project or not? And everyone had to be in consensus that this was a good project for our class and the community, and the project that rose to the top of the list was an outdoor stage for Regatta Grounds Park. So the project statement is to design and erect a public outdoor stage at Regatta Grounds Park for open-air performances and local play, reviving a long-past tradition of community gathering on the shores of Devil's Lake. Some of you might know that there was, once upon a time, a stage at Regatta Park. My children played on the stage, they remember being princesses, dancing around the stage. There were community concerts, Curtis Salgado once played on that stage. It was torn down in the mid-1980s because coast weather took its toll, and it rotted. So it was taken down, several years later, the playground was put, not where the stage was, but further down in the park. And we just thought it would be a great idea to bring this idea back. This is a concept, a design concept, for something we're considering. Of course, we can't build the entire stage right now, we would start with just the flooring portion, but eventually, we thought it would be neat to see something of this magnitude at the park. It's aesthetically pleasing, it ties in with the natural landscaping, it would direct the sound just in the park area without disturbing the neighbors who live nearby. I don't have a pointer. So the stage would be, okay, you can see in the vertical photo, the playground is to the right, the big kind of brown section, and then the trees to the left. The stage would be kind of in that area between the two trees, it would be at the bottom of the hill near the trees, so that people would sit up above the stage, kind of as a natural amphitheater. So after we decided on a project, then it was a lot more discussion regarding how this would impact the community. We found a lot of reasons to build this stage, from increasing revenue, to providing opportunities for collaboration, providing a venue for performers, from high school students to Theater West, to the North Lincoln, what's the music group? Any musicians in the area could use it. We could bring in Shakespeare in the Park, the opportunities are endless. It would attract all age groups, families could come, it could be a gathering spot, and it would attract visitors to our area as well. You can see, we put everything on the table, from how would we deal with increased traffic, with noise, with a change in park usage, to how it would benefit greater appreciation for the lake, how it would highlight the environment in the area. Other issues would be increased park maintenance, how it would impact neighboring homes. This is what happens when you get 25 to 30 minds together. We tried to put it all on the table. So we really took into consideration the stakeholders, and whether they would support the concept or not support the concept. And then we had high supporters, low supporters, high detractors, low detractors. And you can see, some of these stakeholders are on both lists. Our early investigation leads us to believe that there is quite a bit of support out there, we haven't found too much negativity yet. Resident came to me at Regatta Park during a kind of investigatory field trip, and he said, "Great, bring it back, I loved it when it, when it was here." I talked to former Parks and Recreation Director Ron Plogar, who could remember no bad comments or no complaints when the former stage was here as well. Ford Family Foundation provides up to $5,000 in matching funds for supporting the project, and it's up to our group to come up with the rest of the money, not only cash, but in-kind donations as well. Some of our ideas include having people sponsor a board, like sponsor a brick in some construction, or having an event such as indoor night for an outdoor stage, and raising money that way. We're not seeking any funding from the city, we're just looking for support from the city council for this project. The Parks Board met last week, and they gave our unanimous support as well, and thank you to Councilman Norikas for attending that meeting. Questions?
Counsel, open for questions?
I had a question, it's based on a misunderstanding.
Well, if it's been straightened out, we're safe.
Well, now I'm confused.
Okay.
But I know I misunderstood it when I read it, otherwise somebody else would be asking. But if it's matching in kind or money, who comes up with a match?
We have to raise the money. It's matching, the Ford Family Foundation grant is matching the money that we raise, our group.
Oh, I see.
And we'll be looking for donors.
Yeah, I thought that, I thought that your committee would come and ask the city to...
No, no, we're not asking you to match that, no.
I would like to add one thing, and over the years, I've had several calls as the city recorder, of young high school students wanting a place to practice or play, and we were never able to accommodate them. And this will give them an opportunity, you know, to, to practice, and they were starting bands, and they had no place, you know, to practice for the public, so this will also help them have a place to.
If you've ever seen the outdoor stage at Ashland, it is, it is really neat, it's probably larger than, than the one that you would have, but they, it accommodates orchestra, a full orchestra and the whole works, it's wonderful, and I fully support it, I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add, I have a particular affection for this presentation's project. And in the interest of full disclosure, I was a member of the class, the Ford Institute Leadership Program, and I think it's a really worthy, worthy project.
Good. I guess, you know, I was trying to read of what you're expecting from council. So what, what would be the expectation from city council? An endorsement, to follow process, to assert process, to, what are we talking about here?
Basically, an endorsement, that gives us the go-ahead to go forth and, and work on this project.
Okay, so it would be utilizing the process in place, making sure, kind of following up on all the issues you've raised?
Correct.
Neighbors and, okay. If I read your funding right, $12,000, but seven of it is for materials? Or could all $12,000 go for material?
All $12,000 could go for materials, if we get enough, you know, in-kind labor to help put it together, yes.
Okay, so I guess what I wasn't clear on, it felt like there was a labor, a volunteer element in this.
Yes.
Regardless of the amount of money that's raised?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not limited to $12,000, or are you limited to $12,000?
They would like us to stay within the $12,000 range, and that's why we are planning to do just the stage portion at this time.
And $12,000 will buy you material, and put just the stage, and electrical, and, or is it just stage?
It's just the stage.
So the neighbors with the, worrying about the rock bands, garage bands just starting, don't have to worry about electrical amplifiers at this time?
That could be coming, we would like that to eventually be there as well.
But that's part of the process you'd work out, right?
Yes.
Has there been any thought about ongoing maintenance, since in your presentation, you talked about the old stage went away for lack of maintenance?
Well, we're looking at some...
Is that something your group will, the leadership group will have ongoing, or is that going to revert to the city?
Well, I've talked with parks, and it will revert to the city, but we're looking at higher-quality materials that can withstand the weather better than the old materials did, such as Trex Deck, or something more suitable for our coast climate.
But it is something the city would have to look at, parks would have to look at for long-term maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, you indicated there were four items, four projects. There were quite a list of the pros and cons, or the different groups. Do you run a couple in parallel, a couple of your projects in parallel, in case this bumps out for one reason or another that you weren't able to identify?
Sure.
Or do you have to go to class another year and come back?
They hold us back.
Right.
Well, their hope is that, you know, this one particular project, since it rose to the top of the list, and we seem to be able to address, you know, both the yays and the nays, that we'll be able to complete this one. Worst-case scenarios, we would have to drop back to another one, but we only have a year to complete it, so kind of the pressure's on to go with our top choice.
Mr. Mayor, there's, there's one more session, we're wrapping up the class, and there's one more session, and as Gail said, worst-case scenario at that session, if we determine this one was unfeasible, we would try to select another one.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned, because I've always seen a lot of rosy-eyed projects, developers bring them forth until they get into the system, so I just was inquiring what the plan B is, if something unsurmountable appears on this project, because I certainly like the project, I'm just trying to test your leadership skills in anticipation of a roadblock. See how you've done in class.
I have a few questions, just so I can understand, because sometimes my role comes in like a caboose, and I'm frantically trying to figure out where the train was headed originally. And that is, the, I understand the city owns the property, is the city going to be the one that's contracting for the work?
It's the group that's going to be doing the work.
The group is going to be doing the work?
Well, I should amend that, under the direction of a builder, we're hoping maybe to find some builders to donate their time to do this.
Okay.
It would be similar to the Sandcastle Park that was constructed a few years ago in that location, where it was a community-wide project, the city did not construct it. But we will be going through, you know, all the paces that we need to in order to get the project done, permitting.
Okay.
Insurance.
Yeah, I'm just trying to sort through whether it's a public improvement and what its cost is. And I guess my last question was, is there a season for this? I mean, it's outdoor, there's no, is there a cover on it?
We hope eventually there'll be a cover. To start with, no, there won't be. And, you know, you saw this past weekend when the sun comes out, how everybody wants to be outside. You know, we do get some really nice weather, July, August, September, so the season might be short, but I think it'll be well worth it if, once we have this there.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is it just a flat slab, so the, the stage and no railings, no, no back wall, no nothing?
There will probably have to be a short back wall to meet codes, because it will be elevated off the slope.
That was my concern.
Yes, the front of the stage will... The front of the stage will be level with the slope and then the back will be on a rise. So, yes, it would have to meet code and have some kind of a back fence to it.
Initially, there won't be a shell, Gail, so the sound will not be directed up the hill, correct?
Well, the performers will face up the hill, so that'll send it that way to begin with, but correct. It could probably, you know, escape around the park.
And will you be surveying or have you already surveyed the list of stakeholders you showed us there?
Our plan is to do that next.
Okay.
And we were hoping to go before them and say, "Well, the Parks Board and the council are for this."
Well, I feel a bit reluctant throwing my hat in the ring before the stakeholders are consulted, to be frank with you. But that's all, those are the only questions I have.
We, just to let you know, we had one day to come up with this suggestion. I mean, we were really pushed. And then we only had one meeting left. And then with council only meeting one day in May and then, you know, the next one's in June, we wouldn't have had enough time. So, we tried to do as much footwork as we could to get it, to get everything that we thought you would, that would be thought of, answered before we came here today. So, we got as much as we could. But there's still a lot of things, you know, that we need to do, like survey the neighbors and it costs estimates.
So, what can we, what can this council give you, since it won't be a carte blanche, you know, assert everything and get it done? And to, clearly you know that the concern we have is the, what we don't know. I would bet, though, from the questions, I don't know that anybody is against the proposal. And we could check on that. If anybody just doesn't like it at all, now would be a time to say something. So, hearing none...
Just a question. Once the stage is done, does the ownership of that then revert to the city? Or how does this go?
Yes. Our thought is that it would be rented out like the other parks. So, it would generate revenue for the city. And then it could also, you know, be used for special events, say through the cultural center and their calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would think that a conditional or tacit approval from the council might go along with it.
Or maybe rather than approval, sounds like such a strong word in this case.
I'm going to parse that a little bit while we continue to do that.
I would suggest maybe, you know, in essence, acceptance of the project idea to be flushed out and, you know, take it from there, working through the existing processes. But yeah, I'd be... Is that all right?
And we'd be happy to come back and give you updates as well as we progress.
Yeah, I for one, I'm really appreciative that the committee would think of a project that could be of benefit to the city. And, you know, Gail's right, when that playground got built, you know, some people put their minds to it and it's been used ever since. I mean, that was a number of years ago now. So, I hope this works out, too.
Well, I would say, hearing nothing, I think this council would send you to explore further possibilities and the pros and cons and work out the details. But there's nothing saying from this council, "Don't," or "We're not interested." But I'd be careful not to use that this council has approved anything. Some people hang on to that terminology. Is that acceptable?
Yes. We appreciate it very much.
All right. Thank you very much for bringing it forward. It looks like an exciting project.
Well, we're back.
Do we weigh in on evaluation of your grade or anything later? Is that...
No, you don't, Mr. Mayor.
I'll talk to you later about that. Conflict of interest.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, all three of you, coming up. Mr. Townsend, another presentation.
This presentation is informational and really just sort of a heads-up kind of thing. We, in the planning department, a few weeks ago, some people came by and one person was interested in putting in or getting permits for 10, what we call food carts down in the TAF Turnaround area. And that's permitted. We have standards for that. There's a process we go through. Another person came in and wanted to, was inquiring about 10 food carts on private property at a couple of potential locations. Since we've had nothing of the sort for several years, staff thought it'd be worthwhile for you all to be aware of the potentials here and to get whatever kind of feedback you feel is appropriate. Just by way of explaining the terminology, because it's not intuitive. Food carts are really bigger than carts. It's, could be trailers or vans or trucks, what have you. This is an example of a trailer that's purpose-built as a food cart. This one's in Portland. And it's, you can see it's on a parking lot. It's private property and right at the edge of the sidewalk there. They're often in groups. This also is in Portland. And you can see there's a lot of variety to them. And this is what we call street vendor, which normally is not in the street. It would be on the sidewalks. And this is, this one happens to be in New York. It's, you know, your typical hot dog, sidewalk hot dog vendor. So, the street vendors are the small carts. The food carts are the big things. This was when we had a separate set of street vendor regulations in TAF. This was an illustration that was in the ordinance of the kinds of things that we're thinking of as a street vendor cart. As I said, we do have an ordinance on the books relating to street vendors. It's adopted in '82. Originally, it set the maximum size for carts at three and a half by six feet, has insurance requirements, and there were several locations where they were said to be allowed. It was, the ordinance was amended a little bit later to increase the areas where the street vendors would be allowed. None of this came up as a result of, well, I'll say, it came up as a result of somebody from the public inquiring about wanting to do it. And so, the regulatory program was established back in '82. It did prohibit vending within 250 yards of the Curtis Ball Field and in state parks or waysides, except by state permit. In '93, there was amended to increase the insurance requirements and to increase the maximum cart size to four by eight feet. The increase in size was to be more in accordance with the standard-size carts that you could buy that were being manufactured. And later in '93, they prohibited vending in Curtis Park and Ball Field and previously had been within 250 yards. And modified the distance that they had to be away from restaurants, had to be away from the entrance to the restaurant rather than from the restaurant itself, 50 feet away. So, since '99, which is the best information that we've been able to find, we've issued a total of 21 street vendor permits, 10 food vendors between 1999 and 2000, and 11 non-food vendors between 1999 and 2007. Non-food vendors, and one of them in particular was vending sunglasses. You probably don't remember any of these. Because I don't, the sunglasses one was hot for a while, the issues around it. But the reason I say you probably don't remember them is because I don't think, a lot of them just never, even though we issued the permits for them, they just never happened. And the others didn't last long. But we've issued none since 2007. No one's applied for any. And I don't think it's coincidental that in 2006, the farmers market opened up and since then, there've been no street vendor permits requested. And we have the one farmers market and it's possible that we could have others if people wanted to apply for them. And this is just some pictures of some carts. There's this brown one. Again, this is the four by eight thing as well. There's one, you can see actually, if you look under, they all have wheels so they can be taken away at night and so they're normally not left on-site. There's another one. And you can see the wheels. One of the issues around them, of course, is you're allowed four by eight feet, but then you get all this stuff added on around them. We had one applicant years ago wanted to do his four by eight cart, but have it, have his van parked right next to it and have basically his materials supplied out of the van. And so, you can see that it's sort of, you can end up expanding beyond the four by eight feet. In Lincoln City, as street vending, you can't do any of these. This is too big. This is motorized, not allowed for street vending. And this one's also too big. But they could be allowed as food carts. Food carts are, it's sort of a trendy thing right now. This is a recent issue of Portland Monthly Magazine talking about the 40 best food carts in Portland. You know, the sort of hip cities, Portland, Austin, and so on, make a big deal about their food carts, Boulder, other places. And there are places that want to be hip, are saying, "We need food carts. What do we do to get food carts?" But you can see they're often in groups. Again, this is the perimeter of a parking lot there. There's several of them along there. And this, these photos were taken, the ones in Portland were taken, not this past weekend, but the weekend before. Other views, several of them there. Actually, I think this was probably fairly early in the morning because a lot of these aren't open yet, but people are already starting to turn out for them. This is the back of them. You can see in this aerial, how this is all food carts along here, along the perimeter of the parking lot, where there's a public street out here and down here.
Mr. Townsend, do they rent spaces in the parking lot, do you know?
Yes, yes.
They do?
Yeah, from the parking lot owner.
Mr. Townsend? So, there were two separate people that asked about setting up 10 vendor sites?
Yeah, one wanted, two separate people. One was asking about street vendors, which is the small carts at the TAF Turnaround. The other was asking about food carts, which is the large things, like we're just looking at the pictures. And that was at some, a private property at one or another location that they had in mind. So, two separate things. And because they came in like right after each other, we thought, "Well, that's different."
Yeah, and 10, that seems like a...
Yeah. And there's no apparent connection between the people. It's just, you know, just happened. You know, one of the reasons food carts and street vending gets touted, especially in poor economic times, is that the startup cost is smaller than it is for like a brick-and-mortar restaurant or food concession or anything like that. So, that's why there's some interest in them. And it may be just a reflection of the economic times we're in right now, that all of a sudden this happened.
Mr. Mayor?
When?
Relative to that statement, do you think it would also be fair, just generally speaking, to think that operating a food cart, not only would the startup cost be less, but the operational cost and sum would be, would be less? I know you'd have to, I don't know how to ask that. I mean, because you'd have to figure out square footage and everything.
Yeah, they're pretty small operations.
Yeah, where I'm going with that, I saw these start up a little bit in Portland and I guess in certain areas, it has a purpose. But then, in other places, I've seen them right next to people that carry the financial responsibilities of, you know, of a restaurant or, you know, a cafe.
Right.
Or something of that nature. And I, I don't know that that's really very fair.
That's one of the big sources of tension around them is that some people who have brick-and-mortar restaurants feel that it's unfair competition because they aren't, you know, paying real estate taxes or what have you or, you know, don't have the investment in the community that the actual restaurant or cafe operators have.
You know, I should let you finish your presentation because I don't know if you want us to make a comment or just to assimilate the information. But relative to 51st Street, if there were people down there that could not get, you know, a hot dog or soda pop or whatever it is that some of these carts provide, you know, if there was a reason, then, you know, I would think that, you know, we might, we might want to look into various aspects of this. But, you know, there are cafes and places that serve food down there. And I think pretty much everybody that wants to be served is.
Yeah, I can't, you know, I can't, I can't comment on why someone wants to do that. You know, they may, they apparently see a need that they don't feel is being met. Whether that's accurate or not, I don't know. And, you know, a lot depends on what it is they're vending.
Well, yeah, if you can go in and...
Could be life preservers.
Provide something for less money, then it costs somebody to have to pay, you know, to have the rest, to have the cafe there year-round so that they're available for those times that are needed. Like I said, I just, I would have to warm, I would have to think a lot more about this before I warmed up to the idea. Mr. Mayor?
Actually, this one in the 10 carts or street vendor carts in TAF that they're talking about, one, the question they asked is, "Can we plug into the city electricity down there?" And another question was, "Can we have a portable generator down there for the carts?" And the way I'm reading the ordinance, it doesn't say it's explicit, explicitly, but it seems to be contrary to the intent that the city subsidizes it or that there'd be this noisy thing there, you know, cranking out electricity for it. No, I'm not done. So, for the carts, again, that's the big ones. A lot depends on the exact nature of how they're going to be used and the exact nature of their construction and what the city requirements would be. If they're wheeled and they stay there, be on their site for 180 days or less, then they're treated differently than it would be if they were more than 180 days or if they didn't have wheels. In the case of no wheels or more than 180 days, they have to get a building permit. In both cases, there has to be a restroom facility on-site, connection to water, sewer, and electric. They say ADA accessible ramp, and that is true if it's, you know, like if it's going to be there a long time, essentially permanently, you know, the more than 180 days. There are ADA issues even for what's called the temporary ones, where it has to be able to be, has to be able to serve, you know, ADA or has to be accessible to customers. There likely will be site plan review required, compliance with our commercial design standards, parking and landscaping, sign limitations, and obviously then health department regulations as well.
Before you... Could you go back to Mr. Townsend, connection to sewer, water, and electric? What connection to sewer, water, and electric?
Again, it's, depends on whether it's considered temporary or permanent. One of the big issues around them is, you know, maybe they have their own water supply and then what happens to the... One of the big issues around them is, you know, maybe they have their own water supply, and then what happens to the gray water?
Right.
You don't want it just dumped on the ground, has to be disposed of properly. There has to be water, I mean, that's just a health department requirement. There's got to be water of some kind available. And if, actually, if you look in, in some of these, you see, you know, there's, there's wires running around. There's a propane container here.
I'm assuming all that stuff, wires overhead, there's to them?
I doubt it.
Oh.
I hope not. I don't know. I don't see any drops coming down, so I don't think it is, it's possible. But, I mean, there's those, those issues around it, they need to be, need to be addressed. There's, the concerns for all of them is trash. Now, with the, for the street vending, our ordinance says that basically any trash within twenty-five feet of your, of your cart is yours, you're responsible for it, no matter where it came from, you have to pick it up. Aesthetics, you know, it's called the carnival atmosphere and so on. Lack of investment in the community, as, as Mr. Ellingson brought up. And competition for commercial uses, and then there are probably other concerns as well. So, we're not, you know, proposing any amendments to ordinances at this time. Basically, I was, again, just trying to give you a heads up, that we've had these proposals out there. We have provisions in place that address them. And ultimately, either one of them are permitted, under, under various circumstances and, and controls that we have in place now. And so if you have comments or concerns, we'd like to hear, you know. Some people think it's a great idea and, and want to have more, some people think it's a terrible idea and don't want to have them at all. And it may well be that our weather and our, our season makes them totally uneconomic anyway. It may be a non-issue, I don't know. Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Counselor Sprague?
I looked at the list of, I guess, food purveyors that were on the list of the, for approval for the Oregon liquor control that we're going to be looking at later. And in there, there were something like seven restaurants that are not renewing because they're out of business. And so if we were talking about doing something like this, it just seems to me like it's creating that much more of a problem for the existing restaurants we have in town. And I, it bothers me, I can think of maybe one reason why I might want to support that, but I can think of about ten reasons why I don't.
Yeah, you know, we discussed this at the planning commission two weeks ago. And Mr. Williams obviously had some great concerns over that, since he has a restaurant in Nell Scott. And he was saying that, you know, anything that takes very much money away from him, he's, he's on, on the edge enough, as it is, and, and, you know, just a couple more nails and the coffin's closed. He also did mention at the same time that he would be interested in doing like a, a street vendor thing down at the, down at the beach access or whatever, for ice cream and so on. And that's the sort of thing that I think was contemplated and was expected that that sort of thing would happen.
I might add that sometime back, when the Sip and Sand was, was operated by Shirley Mendel, that she was interested in doing a food cart and having it down there at the D River Wayside. And she looked into the insurance side of it, and we found out that was going to be very expensive. And then there were some permitting issues, and there were some other issues, and she ended up scrapping it, just because of all of that.
Yeah, now, at, at the state wayside, there's, there's a separate state permit that's needed as well. And we, for insurance, we require half a million dollars in insurance.
Could you restrict the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor? Could you restrict the, I mean, if our concern is, you know, that it's impacting the existing local businesses, which, you know, the desire to be hip notwithstanding, I think that that would be where I'd be torn, is, is, as you say, you know, they're on the edge enough. Could you restrict it to where if, you know, if the Nell Scott Cafe owner wanted to do something to that effect, if you had a brick and mortar establishment, then you could have a permit?
Someone, someone suggested that, and I, I think there's probably equal protection of the laws issues there. So I, I don't think, I don't think you can...
You couldn't do it like as an extension of your existing occupation tax permit or something like that?
Perhaps, you know, if you tied it to within a certain distance of your restaurant or something like that. But I'm, I'm not even sure of that. Again, I think equal protection of the laws is, is a, is a major concern, and that's...
Mr. Townsend, I'm, I'm hearing this is just information for council, and we, we have existing ordinances, and there's nothing proposed, all that is correct?
We don't have any applications before us at this point.
And again, nobody, even the inquiries that there has been, hasn't come back and said, "If you'd only change this, or that, or whatever." So, so I guess what I'm, I, I like these kind of things to keep us informed. You know, it, I think it's a good idea to refresh and look at where we have ordinances and where we don't. But since there's nothing on the table, right? I mean, that, are you, you're not contemplating, no amendments are proposed at this time. So is there...
No, no.
We're going to see you next month with a, now, a proposal?
Well, I, I guess, I'll say two things about that. One is, I guess the first thing is, I didn't want to be in the position of you, everybody waking up tomorrow morning and finding ten of them there and going, "What the heck is that about?" So I wanted you to be aware of it. Two is, if we have a proposal in, we have to process it under the, the rules that are in place at the time of the proposal. And so right now, we have rules in place that would deal with them.
And you're comfortable with those rules?
Yeah, I, I am, my, my considered opinion is, I don't think these are viable businesses. We have had requests over the years, I'll use a pejorative term, but, but just because it communicates. We had requests for, you know, roach coaches, the, you know, the trucks that go around from business to business, you know, selling sandwiches and so on. And those aren't allowed under our provisions, our ordinances right now. And people have wanted to do that, and we said, "Can't, you can't, it's either four by eight, or you have to be fixed to a, to a spot." And people aren't interested in that. If you want to allow those kinds of things, then, then we could have an amendment to deal with that. But otherwise, I'm not asking any, again, I think just the economics may not be there, given our short season and relatively low population. You could, though, someone could try it and fail, and then you have the, sort of the detritus left over from that, and whatever site they're on.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I know you want to wrap this up, or I'm thinking you do.
Yeah.
Sorry about this.
Thank you.
I just can't find it in my narrative, again, what I heard you say relative to, I think you said it had to be fifty feet away from the door of an existing cafe or restaurant?
Right.
I, I'm sorry, I...
I probably didn't mention it in the narrative, in the staff report.
Yeah. I mean, personally, this is just coming from me only. If it didn't take a whole lot of work to modify that, I'd like to see that distance increased. But that's just me. I mean, fifty feet isn't very far away. And, and I don't know if you're asking for a recommendation, but if you were, I would like to state that. I mean, be, being that we have these regulations, which apparently somebody could come in and do it. I mean, there's nothing, nothing here stopping anyone. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Question. When we have fundraisers, for instance, one that takes place during the farmers market over there, and they have local organizations, nonprofits, that are serving some kind of food, does that fall under this ordinance or not?
Well, there's a lot of sort of exceptions. Like, we have a special event, there may be food vendors. A good example is the Soapbox Derby.
Or the Kite Festival.
Or the Kite Festival, yeah, that's, that's an exception, where it's just, as, as part of the special event, they're approved, and, and so they're allowed to happen.
Okay? Mr. Norikas?
Mr. Mayor, I, I recommend that we direct staff to do nothing. I would agree. Does, is there a different opinion on council?
Only thing I would say is, if we need to, we could tighten up the ordinance we got.
Yeah, I'd like to tighten it up. If it...
Restrict it now?
Well, I understand, the, you know, there's a long list of things to work on. So if you were to prioritize, given the huge impact and rush to have ordinance, or have carts, I'm suggesting there might be something else that staff could do. And I, I thought the list hoops to jump were pretty extensive.
Here, here.
So I, I would, hearing an argument, and I'll listen, but I would concur with Counselor Norikas that, you know, I, I love the information, because it always comes up, being so close to Portland, and especially when we have a week of sunny weather like we're having, everyone's desire is to cook a hot dog outside. So, but I'd, I'd stand down on this one, I think we can...
I concur with the mayor. Don't want to get too much involved in this, being, you know, food service operator, but, yeah.
Unless somebody starts coming for donuts or something, then, then that's a whole different ballgame here.
It's a different issue.
Different issue. Thank you.
But we limit donut stands to be like between four and six AM or something.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Boy, I could say a lot more.
Thank you, sir. And we have one more presentation, Sue Graves from the Lincoln County School District.
David, leave that down.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Sue Graves, and I'm the safety coordinator for Lincoln County School District, and thank you so much for letting me share this with you tonight.
Oh, that, yep, just got you right into there.
Okay. I want to talk to you about a project that I'm working on, to put together a disaster, disaster supply cache for the Taft and Nell Scott area, specifically for the schools, because we have three schools that are right there. We have Taft High School, Taft Elementary School, and Oregon Coast Community College, which have thirteen hundred people in them, between the students and staff, in that one concentrated little area. But school's not always in session, and so when school is not in session, this disaster supply cache could be made available to the community, to the businesses, to the residents, to the visitors that are in that area. So that's what I want to tell you about tonight. All right, so the reason for this is because, as you know, we have what's called the Cascadia Subduction Zone, which is right off our coastline. And it's going to produce, eventually, we don't know when, an earthquake and a tsunami. The earthquake will be a magnitude eight to nine plus, with four to six minutes of intense shaking, and then a tsunami with waves that come for ten to twelve hours or more, like the one that they had in Japan just over a year ago. Our subduction zone is almost a mirror image of theirs, and this is what scientists expect for us, and that's probably not news to any of you. The probability, scientists have discovered that we have these large mega-thrust earthquakes on our subduction zone, on average, every two-hundred-and-forty years. Our last one was in the year seventeen hundred, so it's been three-hundred-and-twelve years since the last one. So there is a decent probability that this could happen in our lifetime, it could happen next year, it could happen fifty years from now, it could happen tomorrow, we don't know, scientists don't know. But they are very confident that it will happen again. So one of my assumptions for this cache is that shelter is going to be a very significant need, because we're going to have major damage from this earthquake on our schools and our structures. Taft Elementary School, my dad went to that school, I went to that, it's old, it's unreinforced masonry. We don't expect it to perform well at all, we won't be able to shelter in that school. The kids, however, practice their duck cover hold drills, they're really good at it. And we believe they will be able to survive the earthquake, but it will take some work to get them out of that building, possibly. Taft High School is a newer construction, but it wasn't, it was built before the new building codes that raised the seismic standards in two thousand. So, and it's a two-story building, we don't know how well it's going to perform, but we don't expect that we will be able to shelter in that building after the earthquake, at least not immediately, it would probably need some inspection, some cleanup, if it's even able to be cleaned up. But one of the issues is that in Japan, they had a hundred-and-fifty-four aftershocks within the first two days, and they were all above five magnitude. Twenty-seven of them were six magnitude or greater. And so psychologically, people aren't going to want to be in buildings that are shaking that often. I mean, more stuff is falling, and the structure is getting more and more compromised. So we believe we're going to have to take shelter outside. And in our environment, hypothermia is a big issue for most, for a lot, a long, long part of our year. Because of the rain, we get, this picture that you see is from Japan, and they're huddled outside around a campfire with some things that they were able to salvage from some buildings. So shelter is one of my primary things. I, you know, in my family, we have our own disaster kits, and we have little mini tents and stuff in them, in our cars that we keep, and I know if this happens, when I'm in town, my family's going to be okay. But I worry about the kids, I just, I really do. I think, "What are we going to do if this happens during school? Where are we going to, where are we going to put thirteen kids outside to keep them from getting all wet and getting hypothermia?" And I was just here in this little area, and at Taft, I have the whole county that I'm working on. But I think we have a really good solution. And so here's a really inexpensive temporary solution. Rain ponchos are fifty cents each, that's inexpensive. Those little Mylar blankets keep you really warm, they're a dollar each. That's, again, very temporary shelter from the rain and cold. But I wanted to show you this picture, this is a little makeshift shelter from Myanmar when they had the cyclone a few years ago. And this kind of shelter wouldn't hold up, of course, in our wind, in our weather. But this wood, these are really cool. These are little garage canopies. And Costco sells them for two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, not that I'm saying we have to get them at Costco, we might have local vendors that can get them for that price or better, which, of course, I would always want to buy local. But these are really cool. These are teens, we have a teen cert program at the high school, where the students are learning how to respond after disasters. And they put one of these up in the fire station at Taft, to see how hard it would be to put it up. They did it, and no problem at all. There's thirty-seven kids in the class, twenty-five were there that day, they fit in the shelter just fine, no problem. There was room to spare, we had ladders and different things in the back. You can see on the right-hand side there, you know, that there's room. And I asked them, we, we debriefed about it, and they said, I said, "Did you guys feel claustrophobic? Could you live in there for a while?" "Oh, no, we were fine." They're like, "No problem." So now it's outside, it's been set up for about a week outside, and staked down, so we can see how it can do in the wind and that kind of thing. But it's, it's a very inexpensive, inexpensive, doable solution for a large congregation of people like that. My other assumption is that we need water to survive. So shelter and water, those are the two most important things. And our water supply is probably really going to be destroyed. This picture that you see up there, all those little red dots, shows the complete destruction of the water and wastewater infrastructure. The orange are extensive destruction, and green is moderate. Even in the valley, they're going to have significant water issues. So we're not going to be able to turn on the faucet and get out water. And we have to have water, we have to have drinking water to survive. And again, I'm looking at thirteen hundred kids there, you know, how are we going to, you know, survive? How are we going to shelter them, how are we going to give them water just to survive with? The Red Cross says that we need a gallon per person per day, half a gallon of that is for sanitary reasons. So we need a half gallon per person per day of drinking water to survive. And I wanted to show you this picture. This is a water truck that came and delivered water to these people after a disaster, and they have their buckets to fill up water with. But we can't expect to get trucks from the valley, because our roads aren't going to be passable. We can't expect those supplies to come in any quick amount of time. Because look at this map, this map shows, all the blue are bridges. There, in Oregon, there will be three-hundred-and-ninety-nine bridges would have totally or partially collapsed under a magnitude-nine Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. And another six-hundred-and-twenty-one bridges would have been heavily damaged. So we can't expect, like I said, for these supplies to be coming right away from the valley, because the roads aren't going to be passable. And so we have to plan ahead of time and provide our own water to survive on for the immediate aftermath of this event. So here's a solution. These are fifty-five gallon water barrels, they're about this wide, about this tall, and you can put water in them with a little water purifier solution, and the water will last for five years. So you only have to trade out the water every five years. They're only ninety-one dollars, they come with a pump and a wrench in there. They're very doable solutions, inexpensive solutions. Another solution are water bottles. I would want every person to have a water bottle. Once they drink the water that's in there, we could pump water in there from those gallons, those fifty-five gallon barrels. So that's how, what they would use to have their drinking water. But on the right, you'll see this little water filter straw. This is about the size of a pen, and it can filter twenty gallons of water. And so we have so many natural water sources here... And so we have so many natural water sources here, from rain, from creeks, streams, that kind of thing, that we can set up systems where gutters will bring water down, and then, you know, people can use their water bottle, fill it up with the water, and then their filter straw to drink the water, so it will be safe to drink. Those are only $6 per person, another, another very doable solution to help us survive after this event. Another thing we need is food, and on the left there, you'll see the yellow food calorie bars. These are 3,600 calories, and they're perforated, they're kind of a dense granola, definitely just survival food. I have eaten them before, and they're not like something that I would just pull out to snack on, but they do give you good calories to survive with. They're apple cinnamon flavor, they're perforated. So one person could use one of those and ration it out to themselves for three days at 1,200 calories per day. Again, that's not a lot of calories, but this is for survival. And so you'll see that picture there on the right, these are people in Japan who are lining up at the grocery store to get supplies after the earthquake. But in Taft, we have three grocery stores, the IGA, and then two food marts, and all of those are in the tsunami zone. So we're not probably going to be able to get any food or supplies from them. All right, so these buckets with the toilet lids are in all of our classrooms already. We use those for in case we have an extended lockdown or situation. And so I don't think we'll be able to get these from Taft Elementary, because that building is probably going to have major collapse issues, but from Taft High, we think we'll be able to salvage these plus other supplies from that building. These can be used as toilets, they can be used to gather water, gather firewood, for all kinds of reasons. There's really good, it could be a really good asset in this kind of disaster, there's toilet paper in them and other things. And so what do we put all these things in? Well, we don't want to put them in a building that might collapse, so this is a storage container that the, that the Walport, that Walport has. This is the fire chief of Walport, and he got this container six or seven years ago. He has it in a high-ground location in the city of Walport, and he has a bunch of disaster supplies in it. And he has had no condensation, it's steel, it's not aluminum, he's had no rodents get in, he hasn't even had rust. And I've gotten quotes from three different container companies, and I've asked them these things, and they said, "Well, you know, on the coast, you're probably going to want to paint it every two years to avoid rust," but Chief Clausen says they haven't even had rust on it. So I think it's a real doable solution, if we can find a place to put it somewhere near the schools. I've already had two people offer spaces for it, which is really cool. And they're not that expensive of a solution either. So here is a picture of the area, the Taft and Nelscott area. It's actually an older picture, it's from 2007, so not everything is in there, but I don't know if I have a pointer, but I think you can see the big football field there. So that's where the Taft High, Taft Elementary, Oregon Coast Community College is. That's that high concentration of 1,300 people. But look at this, there's 365 days in a year, 24 hours, that's 8,700 hours in a year. School is only in session 164 days of the year at eight hours. Schools in session 15% of the year. So getting this disaster supply cache, while first choice will be the kids, if this disaster happens when school is in session, we have to take care of our children. The supplies will go to them. But the other 85% of the year, this cash will be there for the community. So this is a really win-win partnership for the school district and for the city and for the local businesses and residents in that area. So I think, I think we can really get this done, I think it's a doable thing. I'm going to show you the price tag on it next, and so don't gasp. All right, so what we've got here, I don't know if you can see that well. We have one steel storage container, 1,300 rain ponchos, so everyone would have a rain poncho, they need to stay dry while we're getting things set up. One Mylar blanket per person. If we buy 44 of those canopies and we put 30 people in them each, you can house 1,300 people. That is really affordable for shelter. If we, I put on there getting eight more, so we could set up four for medical treatment areas, a couple for restrooms, emergency operations, logistics, that kind of thing. And then the only thing those canopies don't have are bottoms to them, so I put some tarps in, so that we could have floors, so that kids and people aren't sitting on the wet ground. If we get 24 of the 55-gallon water barrels, that will hydrate 1,300 people for two whole days, which is awesome. And then everyone would have a water bottle, everyone would have a water filter straw, so you'd have ongoing supply of water because of your filter straw, and you'd have ongoing shelter, because these shelters are going to last more than just a couple days. If we had to shelter them in them for a month or more, we could. They're, they're very sturdy. And then everyone would get one food calorie bar, the 3,600 food calorie bar. So it comes to over $33,000, and for any one organization alone, that would be like a deal breaker. But if several of us partner together, I know we can get this done. And here's some ideas that I already have for it. I'm, I have written a lot of grants for the school district, maybe you've seen some of those in the paper, I've already written grants and gotten over a million dollars for the school district over the years, on various different grants. So I have a good idea how to write grants, and I've been successful. There's a State Farm grant, I've talked to them, it's for pre-disaster supplies, and they said, "Because you have a strong teen CERT program, if you get the kids involved, we probably will be able to fund you for $5,000 to $10,000." That's a really good start. I'm also planning to write the tribe, the tribe has funded other things for me that I've written for, for pre-disaster mitigation things, and I'm hoping that they might be able to support us with $5,000. The county commissioners offer a $2,500 matching grant to cities, fire districts, and the school district every year, and we're devoting ours to this project, so that's another $5,000. We're asking that you might designate your next county emergency matching grant to this, that's another $5,000. And I'm also going to ask the fire district if they will designate theirs. Look how close we are already. So I also have met with several business owners in the Taft and Nelscott area, and I'm speaking to their Bay Area Merchants Association on Wednesday. I met with Oregon Emergency Management today, and the National Weather Service today, they're going to write letters of support, and Oregon Emergency Management thinks they're going to be able to help support us financially, but they didn't give me a number yet. So I think we can really get this done, and I think it can be a demonstration project for all along the Oregon and Washington coast. And believe me, I like to publicize the good work that we do in Lincoln County, this is my home, I was born and raised here, I love it here, and I'd like others to know what we're doing, as well as to give them ideas on how they can do this, because we're all going to be in the same survival mode when this happens. So my final slide is to say that we can survive this event. We live in an awesome area, we don't have to be afraid of this event, we can do some things now, so that we can totally survive this event. It's a big problem, this is a catastrophe, not a disaster, like some of the disasters we've seen around the country, and the reason why is because it's going to affect Northern California, Oregon, and Washington, and British Columbia. It's not a localized disaster like some are, and it's going to take a lot longer for supplies to get in here than other disasters, tornadoes and stuff that happen around the country. But we know we have 1,300 citizens in that small concentrated area, at least in the schools, and we're going to be on our own. But we have a doable solution for shelter and water, which are the two basic things to survive, and with big partnerships, which we already kind of have underway, I really think we can get this job done. I was at a week-long FEMA conference, and I'll close with this, in September, for this very issue. It was FEMA and the state of Oregon, and they brought together a whole bunch of stakeholders from around the state for a whole week, and we planned for this event. At the beginning of the conference, the guy from FEMA stood up, and he held a blank piece of paper, and he said, "This is the plan we have for the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake and tsunami event." And it was blank on both sides. He said, "That's why you are all here this week, because we haven't started planning yet." And we planned on so many different subjects, it was incredible. And at the end of the conference, what the same guy from FEMA stood up and said, and I have it in quotes in yellow on the bottom, it's, they said, "The only way to reduce suffering on the Oregon coast is to develop disaster supply caches in advance of the earthquake." And I'm taking that seriously, because I was there for a week, and after I heard everything I heard, and we saw, and we studied maps, and where the different destruction liquefaction's going to be, not just on the coast, but in the valley and Portland, Seattle, and where supplies would come into first, to the real populated areas, I thought, "We have to prepare better. We've done so much already, but we have to start developing disaster supply caches, so that we can really survive this together." So, thank you so much for listening to me, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, very enlightening. Questions, council? Please, Mr. Norikas.
Where can one buy one of these water filter straws?
I have gotten them at Buy Mart here and at the electronic superstore. I bought them at both places.
Thank you.
I guess, let me preface this just a little bit. I can write and approve grants, but I can't, I don't believe I have the authority to commit the city to not apply for a grant, but to, but to make it for another entity. I think you would have to do that. But I think I also misunderstood, perhaps, our maximum grant is 2,500, meaning that you would expect a match from us of 2,500.
That's what I would hope, because this is just, it's not only for the school district, but it's also for the city in a big way.
No, I understand, and I can support the request.
And I read the grant application from the county today, and it says that they encourage entities in the same jurisdiction to work together and combine their grants. And so I think it would totally be allowable for the county for us to combine our grants.
I can support, absolutely recommend this, because it's the first step that I've seen that would actually deal with a large number of people for a short period of time. It may require a, and I'll come back to you when the budget is up for consideration, it may require a slight adjustment to our budget, and we have another issue along emergency planning that might, in combination, the two might require another $5,000 or $10,000 to be put into the budget. And I have no problem recommending that.
Great. Carrie, you had a question?
That was my question.
Okay.
David just answered it.
Good. Other, other thoughts, comments?
Great program.
Yeah. I'm glad to see you.
Thank you.
Taking, while you were sitting in, that, the leadership, since we were just talking to the Ford leadership folks, it's, it's nice to see and demonstrated leadership moving ahead here.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for giving me the time to share it with you.
If you wish to support this, then we would need a motion.
And the motion would be to direct city manager to commit the city to forego the county's annual grant potential?
Or to dedicate it to this project.
And to match it.
And to match.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion with a second to direct, have the city manager, commit the city to direct the county annual grant for emergency funding and match it. Would there be a roll call vote?
Langson?
Yes.
Norikas?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Eggleton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, city manager report.
Thank you, mayor. The first item is to ask council if you'll consider appointing a committee of council to begin reviewing the outside agency requests for funding for the charitable groups that provide assistance in the community.
And this would be work so that we have it ready for the first meeting, council meeting in June?
That would be preferable, although it's not essential. If the, if the committee didn't finish its work, the budget could be approved simply with the amount, with the distribution determined later, but it would be nice to have it all ready to go at the same time.
Well, hearing no objections, I've got a Councilor Norikas, Councilor Sprague, and Councilor Ward, that I'm sure would, you know, love to sit down in a small room and go through the oversubscribed account.
Does the room have to be small, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And when the list?
You'll get out of it quicker if it is. You'll accomplish the task. If that's all right, would you, gentlemen?
You bet.
And that, what I'd like to do is make sure that you have the latest list from the city recorder, because there were some, but just if you'd make sure that you have all the applications and, Chester, if you wouldn't mind, would you mind sharing that?
No, I would not.
Okay. Thank you.
If the city recorder can email that updated list to us, that would help.
Thank you, mayor. The next item, you've heard us discuss before, and particularly during the budget presentation, that we have a sizable allocation of resources, both in cash and in property, dedicated to workforce, affordable housing projects, and we may be in some of the best time we're going to face for many years to make something out of that. And I'd like to reschedule, because we had it scheduled once before, our workshop on that issue. I'm going to say probably about an hour and a half, no, certainly no more than, than two hours. My suggested date, although we're, you know, whatever works for you, both in dates and in time of day, would be the first Monday in June. That would give staff an opportunity to get ready for it. It's an off Monday, but again, that, that date is not critical. Traditionally, we've done our workshops like this during the day, either morning or afternoon, whatever suits the council schedule the best. But any day that week, the next week, whatever your pleasure, that's just a starting place.
Okay. Looking at the first week in June is, Monday is the fourth, fifth, sixth, so on. I'm wondering if Tuesday might work better for anyone?
Tuesday would work better for me.
Okay.
Is there anybody that wouldn't work, and then?
Tuesday the fifth?
Tuesday the fifth?
Tuesday the fifth will work, provided we can make it compatible with the planning commission, which starts at?
But we normally don't do them in evenings, although, so your next choice would be morning, afternoon, or evening?
Yeah.
What time in the afternoon?
The fifth and?
So, let's stay away from the evening, because that's?
What time in the afternoon would be talking about?
So what would work for you, Mr. Sprague?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh.
Two o'clock?
Okay. So, so other people, Alex, are you, what's best for you?
Two is fine, afternoon's fine.
Is it? And you're all right?
Anytime.
Two o'clock on the fifth?
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. Two more brief items. We've had a request to present the county's legacy program, which I don't know if you're very familiar with or not, but to our people that would be involved in that, presumably Parks Board and Open Space Committee. We have a Parks Board now, we have perhaps an Open Space Committee, but let me explain the Open Space Committee. It is not set up by ordinance, rather, it was set up by a resolution that went to the voters when they approved the bond issue, and it calls for a committee, I believe, of five, with three residents, who I think we have, and, I'm sorry, we have two, three, one from the UGB, which we have, and a member of council. And again, I don't know what its legal authority is, it can't make any decisions, but it can influence the council in the future, and it can be a public, or a body to review ideas like the legacy program. We don't have a council member, and pending your evaluation of the Open Space Committee, and I know we've talked in the past briefly about maybe that could be combined with a Parks Board, but pending that, and because we have a request for a meeting, I wonder if the mayor would consider appointing a, a member, at least temporarily, to the Open Space Committee.
Happy to do it, and my understanding, they haven't, it's not been a committee that meets all the time, so it's certainly ad hoc or periodic.
It's only generally met when we have a proposal for an open space acquisition that is really high marks and, and pretty exciting, then we call a meeting. We haven't had one of those for a while.
Is there any council member that's so inclined or so eager, you know, to do this?
I'll volunteer for that, your honor.
You, I hate wearing you out here, Mr. Norikas.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll, we'll appoint Councilor Norikas.
Thank you very much.
He's eager to add to his resume.
Thank you very much, mayor. Last item, you all may recall the Agnes Creek Open Space Thinning Project that we had a workshop on some time ago. I asked Mark Miller of Trout Mountain for an update, because we have a contract with him. He sent this to me this afternoon. "I'm still working on the Agnes Creek Thinning Project, I have spoken with three contractors and shown one the job, and will be showing the job again this next month. Domestic hemlock markets have been recovering slowly following the crash of the China export market last fall, and I expect further strengthening by early fall.
market last fall, and I expect further strengthening by early fall. I hope to be able to schedule the work for this fall, possibly sooner if there is a high fire hazard season in the valley. I have filed the required notification forms with the Oregon Department of Forestry." So this project to not cost us anything and perhaps make some money needs to occur at a time when, when lumber prices, particularly for the mix that we've got there, is good. And it did fall and again, you heard his, his prediction. So that's just by way of an update. We have not forgotten the project. It's just waiting for the right time. That's all I had, mayor. Thank you.
Good information. Any questions of city manager? Okay. All right. Thank you. Joan, anything that want to leave you out over there?
Thank you for asking, nothing right now.
With that then, no resolutions. We did approve one in the consent agenda above. This would be a time for comments from citizens present, another opportunity. You know, Bruce, I can give you another five minutes. Okay. Any, anyone else that didn't sign? Seeing none? And we'll go to councillor, councils and comments. Councillor Sprague?
I have no comment.
None, none today? Okay.
I'm quiet tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Henry, how are you?
24 hours to get your ballots in, people.
That's right. They got to hand deliver, too late to mail.
I think there's a drop-off station downstairs in the, by the library. If they don't want to get out of their car, if they want to walk upstairs, I think there's a box out here during office hours.
Good reminder. Councillor Narikas?
Nothing, thank you.
Gary, what's up? All right. Councillor Ward?
Yeah, I got something. Good. This Thursday at St. Peter, the Fisherman Lutheran Church here in town, I think that's over on Southwest 13th, there's the Project Homeless Connect, which is, I'm going to poach a little bit from some material, but it is in need of volunteers. It's helping provide some essential services and for the homeless community. And it's a yearly, yearly deal. There's two, there's two shifts, I think they're doing, 8:30 to 1:00 or 11:30 to 4:00. And I'm pretty sure they still need volunteers. You can call 541-574-2684 for more information on that.
That's right. And this, this is, I think, the second, the second year they've done this project homeless. And it's really a place where services are congregated. So it's not just this sort of homeless, but maybe disadvantaged.
Disadvantaged, sure.
As well.
Yeah.
But includes a dental van and some medical.
Haircuts, basic toiletries, that type of thing.
Right. So yeah, I understand the, the volunteer needs are really more to guide folks through the, through the process.
You bet, you bet.
They could use, use help. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for me.
I have a couple, just to remind folks, tomorrow night is our first public meeting